I'll call to order. Which meeting are we? The 37th meeting of the Mayor and City Council, meeting in regular session on Monday, September 23rd, 2019. I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Moe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Raoul, would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Moe.
We're going to take things just slightly out of order. I'd like to first of all, welcome all of our guests who are here tonight. We have members of the Prince George's County Basketball Special Olympics Maryland Basketball Team, and I have some citations that I want to issue to each one of you. Remember, as the mayor always says, you're on TV, so big smiles. I'll come down to the dice, Mayor. I want to welcome to Coach Dwayne Brody, Assistant Head Coach Markeith Williams Senior, and Dolores Furman, Team Coordinator for, again, the Prince George's County Special Olympics Maryland Basketball Team. Tonight, the Mayor and City Council and I would like to recognize the outstanding efforts of these athletes and their impeccable basketball performance this season, a whopping 13-0. You guys should give yourselves a round of applause. In not just recognition for your outstanding record, but in recognition for the athletics and the commitment that you've made to your team and your teammates, the Mayor and City Council want to issue you these citations. So as I call you up, if you'll come forward and then stand behind us, at the end, we'll do a group photo. Dwayne P. Brody, Head Coach. Markeith Williams Senior, Assistant Head Coach. Dolores Furman, Team Coordinator. Drew P. Brody. Antonio Gonzalez. Karen H. Himmens. Avery Perry. Markeith A. Williams Jr. Robert A. White Jr. And Brianna Williams. Let's give these outstanding athletes a round of applause.
Can we get a group shot of everybody? Did I ask who scored the most? Everybody, right? It's a team. Come on up here. My shit. We did not hear what Harvey said, believe me.
Coach, want to say anything? I just want to say Councilman Sidnor, who helped arrange this, is out of state on travel, but he certainly sends his best wishes also. Coach?
So I'm glad we had this festive occasion to meet this evening. I'm so proud of each and one of my players to see the growth that they've had since day one to now, just the exponential growth, and it brought tears to my eyes when we won the championship, not only because we won the championship, but because of the growth and the commitment to winning and the commitment to playing together as a team, the practices we had late at night during the week in the cold, sometimes the snow, the rain, the sleek, we all stayed together, and through it all, we ended up bringing home the gold, representing Prince George's County. Proud of all you are. Thank you.
Going to show everybody your gold medal? Show them what everybody got.
I want to thank the City Council and the mayor for putting this together. It all happened by happenstance. Mr. Signal Keith refereed our championship game, and afterwards, we spoke, and he said, "Hey, why don't you bring your team so we can honor the team?" So I want to thank the City Council, the mayor for coming up to see.
I'll just close by thanking you all. It's an honor for us to certainly... We've seen, we're beginning to make it a habit of bringing in our youth and sports leagues around the city and around the county, so this is just an extension of that, so we're really, really pleased to have you guys come in. And you're welcome to come to our council meetings anytime. It won't be as exciting as this one tonight, and that's why we put you in front, because the rest of the stuff is kind of mundane, but necessary. My colleagues don't look at me, but it's necessary, but we certainly appreciate you being here, and you're welcome anytime.
Just congratulations again to all of you. Keep up the great work you're doing, and maybe you can come and get the mayor and council, and we'll have a little game of basketball. You will definitely win, believe me. So thank you all for coming again. We understand if you have to get up and leave, so thank you all again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2, Approval of Minutes. Council, we have before us Approval of Minutes for the 35th Meeting of July 22nd, 2019. I'll entertain a motion and a second. Thank you, Councilman Lez. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Raoul, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda Item 3 is Report of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we will start with Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. Yesterday, I attended the annual, myself and Councilmember Smalls attended, the annual City of Laurel Dog Show. There were a lot of dogs there, a lot of owners. It was very, very hot. It was extremely hot. There was very little shade, and I found out from members of the Parks and Rec that they only have one canopy, so I'm here tonight to plead for the city to buy a few more canopies to possibly, next time, save my life and other people's lives. The dogs were a lot smarter than us. They had water bowls, they had a big tub they could go into. We didn't have nothing, so we were a little dehydrated at the end, and then we had a little bulldog that I picture, I posted on Facebook, that got into that big pan of water, and he dunked his head underneath it, and I got a real nice picture of him sitting in the water. But it would be very, very encouraging to the city to get some more canopies so that we don't have anybody or any animals that might have passed out as a result of that. And I would understand that fountains or water fountains or things would cost a lot to get into McColic Field, but I think an option for the future, if we ever were able to get that or get a grant or something to get a couple of water fountains around that area, because we do do a lot of events at that field. I did hear from the Board of Trade, and there's rumor that we're going to have, before the next election, we're going to have a council debate and possibly a mayoral debate. I love this time of year. This would be the second. I'm nearing the end of my first term, and this will be the second term, and there's nothing better than having in the political system a debate with the candidates. And you really get, I get very excited about it, but you really get a feel for the other candidates and the questions that are asked. We're totally unprepared of what they're going to ask, and to be able to answer in front of a crowd and answer these questions that they ask. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Councilwoman Nicholas?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I attended the 9/11 ceremony, and I just wanted to thank all of the departments and staffs that were involved in putting that together. It's always well attended. It's a memorable event, so I'd like to thank everyone who attended that. I also attended the City in the Park, which was at Casula Point, and all the departments to put that together and everyone that came out. We also attended the 2020 Census Kickoff in Discovery Park, which was very well attended. I'm looking forward to other upcoming events for that. And I wanted to also just, I've never had the opportunity to thank Principal Dwayne Johnson for all of his years of committed service as a principal in the Prince George's County Public School System. So if you're listening, Principal Jones, I'm sorry, said Johnson, Principal Jones, thank you for all of your service. That concludes my report.
Councilman Lez?
Thank you, Mr. President. You heard the 9/11 ceremony was very, very nice. The Census Kickoff was well attended, and hopefully, we'll get that kind of response when we do the census. City Hall in the park at Casula Point, thank you to the citizens that came, and thank you to the two deer that watched the whole meeting from the other bank of the river. There's a lot of wildlife down around the river. Congratulations St. Vincent's Pilate High School on their major fundraiser on Saturday, their Crab Feast. And finally, condolences to the family of Sally Glenn, longtime resident of Laurel, who moved away a few years ago into a facility, and she passed away, and she was a very, very nice person, good neighbor, and good for Laurel. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. Along with the many things that my colleagues participated in, I had the opportunity to represent the mayor and council at a luncheon with Senator Ben Cardin. Senator talked about, obviously, a number of things that are going on, climate change and other things that are at the federal level, but we also talked, because this was a gathering of mayors and council members, municipal mayors and council members, we also talked about things that are germane to our local government. We talked about vaping, for example. We talked about the census, and I think that the senator really stressed to all in attendance the importance, as we are discussing in here locally, about the census and the need for everyone to be counted. And just to sort of follow on with what Councilman Lez talked about as far as the census event that we held a couple of nights ago, it was well attended, but I certainly am looking forward to more word getting out, and I know that under the guidance of our Planning Department Head, Ms. Pulley, and others, we will certainly see that occur, but it's extremely important, and I don't think it can be said enough about the importance of everyone being counted and participating in the census. I have the honor, although this young lady is not a resident of Laurel, but I have the opportunity to present a governor's citation to, I say, young lady, she'll be turning 110 years old this Thursday, and I have the honor of presenting a citation to her, and she still gets around fairly well. She's wheelchair-bound, but she still is out and about and moving and very much aware of her surroundings, and so I thought it was just, you don't come across, have the opportunity to celebrate someone's life who is that old and the kind of things that she's seen and accomplished over 110 years, so I just thought it was worth mentioning. That's my report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a report, but I can't seem to get to it tonight, so I'm trying to do by memory, and don't you all beat me up, because I usually laugh at you all for not being able to get into your laptops. I want to thank our Department of Park and Recs and the volunteers for the dog show event, I thought it was well attended, and the judging, maybe a couple more judges next year to help out, so it's better. He's not even paying attention down there. But it was a good opportunity for the community to really come together. I think they have a good time, they really do, and I appreciate all the hard work of the judges as well as the staff and Joanne in your shop. We do appreciate that and all that came out. I did have the opportunity to attend the Maryland Department of Transportation Authority Customer Appreciation Day. They are located right off of Conterra Drive, for those who may not know. That's back where the MDTA police are, as well as there's all of their resources for roads and keeping the ICC open, so they have always supported us during our open house and events, so I thought it was important that I go and had a very good time, got to see a lot of the things that they had there and some nice facilities, and just appreciate the invitation. I also attended the American Legion Centennial Celebration as well, and I want to thank them. They had their picnic, and I want to thank the commander for the invitation, and though I was running a little bit behind, they had a nice little opening ceremony, and then throughout the day, they had different events, and again, American Legion Post 60, as well as the Auxiliary and Squadron also do great work for the community, so we want to acknowledge and thank them as well. I do want to thank Councilman, or Council President, for attending the Senators' meeting. Appreciate that friend, and it's important that we're represented there, so thank you as well. And you heard about the Census kickoff that we had over at Discovery Park. Again, I want to thank the council, I want to thank all the city staff, in particular, Christian Pulley, I want to thank you, and Sarah Green, Chief of Staff, for the hard work you all did of putting it together. It is important, word of mouth is our best advertiser, so we, again, have time to remind people, this is one of many events that we'll be doing, to remind people, to make sure that they're counted, that they feel comfortable being counted, and give them all the particulars of what the census is all about if need be. Mr. President, that concludes my report. I do, if you want to do the appointments, and I'll walk down and do these.
Council, we have a few appointments and reappointments. We'll take the appointments first, and then we'll move to the reappointments. Council, I'd like your consideration for the appointments of Inka Patel, Laurel Arts Council, Monica Studigat, Laurel Arts Council, Dave Everett, Tree Board. Those are our appointments.
Move for approval?
Okay, yeah. Absolutely.
Move for approval?
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Councilwoman Nicholas, any discussion? Hearing none, I will entertain, rather, Ms. Raoul, call the roll.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes, and I want to welcome you to our committees. I'm sure you'll enjoy it, and we'll get a lot out of it. Thank you. Now, moving to the reappointments. Yeah, if you'll introduce yourselves, I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind.
I'm Inka Patel. I have been living in Laurel for 10 years, and I was actually a proud participant to do our first own Laurel public art project of the bench. It was really memorable process, so I'm excited to be part of the council.
Thank you.
I'm Dave Everett. I've been in Laurel since 2012. My wife runs the Bed and Breakfast, and I've been a fan of trees for a long time, so I'm happy to help out.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Okay, we'll move to the reappointments. Brian Lee, Board of Appeals. Edward Rowe, Public Safety and Transportation CAC. James Phillips, Tree Board. Don Gravlich, Public Safety and Transportation CAC. Fred Carman, Emergency Services Commission. And Marjorie McSiney, Laurel Historic District Commission. Council, I'd like your approval on these reappointments.
Nika, motion to approve all of these, all of the mentioned appointments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Raoul, please call the roll.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Council, for that. I do have several proclamations I'd like to read. Proclamation 2019-16, whereas October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of art and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by those, as well as the White House and Congress for over 30 years. Whereas the City of Laurel recognizes that the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of all citizens, and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country, and whereas the City of Laurel encourages all residents to participate and invest in visual arts, performing arts, and arts, art education, and now therefore, I, Craig Emo, the mayor of the City of Laurel, hereby proclaim and call upon the residents to celebrate and participate and promote the art culture in the city. Come on up, too, now she's an art council member. Joanne's coming up, too. Come on, you've already been confirmed.
Yes.
I just want to thank the Mayor and City Council for all the support of this committee. This is a very, very active committee. They have wonderful ideas, and they really do hit the ground, they have hit the ground running in the past two years, the number of programs that this group has been able to put together, and the art installations that we've had in just that short amount of time are just phenomenal, and if you haven't been out to see the beautiful mosaic art installation at the municipal pool and the bench, and come to some of the programs that we sponsor with both Pilate High School and Laurel High School, it is really a testament to how hard this group is working, and I'm just very happy to be part of it.
I have proclamation 2019-17, whereas Maryland Governor Larry Hogan is encouraging Marylanders of all ages to take step, take the steps to the streets, trails, and parks throughout the day on Wednesday, October the 2nd, 2019, in honor of Walk Maryland Day, to promote walking as a daily activity, and whereas walking as an activity provides many health benefits, including helping maintain a healthy weight, reducing risk for heart disease, stroke, type 2 diabetes, depression, and some cancers, as well as improving the quality of life, and whereas the Mayor and City Council of Laurel continue to encourage walking throughout the city by requiring walking paths in all new developments and by enhancing the existing walkways in the city, and whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Maryland are joining together on Walk, to Walk on this day to promote this activity on a daily basis, now therefore, I, Craig Emo, the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2019, as in the City of Laurel, is the Fourth Annual Walk Laurel Day. Joanne, you want to?
Again, thank you, Mayor and City Council, and we're very happy to be part of, and the city's happy to be part of Walk Maryland, but really, we have wonderful parks and places that you can get out and walk every day, so we really encourage you to go out, check out everything we have around the city, and make every day Walk Maryland Day.
I think that's it for you. Proclamation 2019-18, whereas in October 1987, the first Domestic Violence Awareness Month was observed in the United States, and whereas domestic violence has no place in our society, and we have a moral obligation to help prevent it, a home should be a place of stability and comfort and love. Domestic violence shatters this important function, this foundation, excuse me. Domestic violence shatters this important function, this foundation, excuse me. And whereas the crime of domestic violence in individual privacies invades individual privacy, security, and humanity throughout the, and humanity throughout the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, and economic control and, and/or abuse. And whereas the effects of domestic violence on children are devastating and can cause lifelong problems due to emotion, emotional or physical trauma. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month calls the, calls to the attention, the importance of working together to assure a life free of harm for all residents in the City of Laurel. Now therefore I pray, am I the mayor of the City of Laurel, to hereby proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month for this month of October. Chief, you want to come up? You want to?
Thank you. I'm just one, I'm just very appreciative that we have this proclamation. Most people here know that I'm a survivor of domestic violence, and my baby was killed in 1995. So this is very important to me, and I thank you for doing this.
Thank you, ma'am. Proclamation 2019-19, whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor all those who lost their lives to breast cancer, and we recognize the courageous survivors who are still fighting it. And whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year, and tens of thousands will lose their battle with this disease. And whereas although both men and women can have breast cancer, women are at a higher risk. I encourage all women to find out if they are at increased risk and to learn more about recommended screenings. And whereas the City of Laurel will stand in solidarity, solidarity with breast cancer survivors and reaffirm our commitment to raising awareness of the disease and to advancing research efforts. Now therefore I pray, am I the mayor of the City of Laurel, to hereby proclaim October in the City of Laurel as Breast Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to increase their education. Anybody? No? We're at proclamation 2019-20, whereas Community Media Day is an annual celebration of voices that bring awareness to the importance of free speech and access to media for all individuals. And whereas access to information in today's media environment is critical for the health, for the, for the healthy function of our community by connecting local government, community organizations, schools, and citizens. And whereas community media organizations provide a means for, for communities to tell their stories, hear each other's stories, and to create new stories together by using social media, television programming. And whereas Laurel TV provides this valuable programming on public ed, to the public on ed, and education and government access channels. And whereas citizens benefit by using community media content to stay aware, stay aware, and to be involved in our community. Now therefore I pray, am I the mayor of the City of Laurel, to hereby proclaim October the 20th, 2019, as Community Media Day. I don't know if there's anybody here for that. Anybody? Come on up. Oh, you were ready, even, that's one picture that will never.
Thank you very much, Mayor Mo, for recognizing Community Media Day. To all the residents out there that are watching this on Laurel TV, we know you're out there, we hear from you regularly, and we're always trying to give you fresh content, things that are happening in the community to keep you engaged. If you have any ideas, always just send us an email at info@laureltv.org. We are here, this is your community television station. Thank you very much.
The last is proclamation 2019-21, whereas the City of Laurel is an active member of the Maryland Economic Development Association, MEDA, a nonprofit organization whose mission is to enhance the knowledge and skills of members, encourage, encourages partnerships and networking among people committed to bringing jobs and capital to Maryland, and promotes the economic development as an investment in Maryland. And whereas the economic growth and stability of the state affects all regions and jurisdictions of Maryland, and the City of Laurel is an important component of the state's economic success. And whereas the City of Laurel promotes the economic well-being of the city by working to improve the city's business climate and the professionalism of those in the field of economic development with the interest in economic, with, with the interest of economic development in the city. Whereas the mayor and city council of Laurel and the Department of Economic Community Development reaffirm our dedication in enhancing the city's economic, economics by continuing to offer and promote economic development tools like the Commercial Corridor and the Main Street Development Programs, in addition to the Affordable Housing Program. And now therefore I pray, am I the mayor of the City of Laurel, to hereby proclaim October 20th through 26th, 2019, as Economic Development Week. Kristin?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor Mo and the council for this proclamation. Economic development is very important for the city and the county and the state as a whole. The city is very dedicated to continue to bring jobs to the city, and please, everyone, fill out your census form and the upcoming census. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, mayor. We'll now move to Agenda Five, the report of the city administrator, the Goddard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eddie in the production room in the back has made it very clear to me that the community does have a choice of what they're watching tonight, and if I stay too long, he will put the Redskin Game on these televisions and cut me out. So I'll try to make it as quick as I can. But I want to welcome everybody back from the summer recess, and to thank all of our department heads and city staff for all the hard work over the summer. They are the hardest working group that I've ever worked with. Couple congratulations, congratulations on our Chief of Staff, Ms. Sarah Green. She completed a multi-year training program and recently received her Certified Municipal Clerk's designation. Sarah, congratulations. Kristin Pulli, our Economic and Community Development Director, has been accepted into the Washington Council of Governments Institute for Regional Excellence Program. This is a year-long executive program focused on leadership, management, and increase in exposure and innovation in local government from a regional perspective. Upon successful completion of the program, she will obtain a Certified Public Manager designation. So, good luck. The year will come and go pretty quickly. And one of our council members, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sidnor's not here, just want to congratulate him, as he recently graduated from the Academy for Excellence in Local Governance Program, the University of Maryland. This is a program that was co-founded by the Maryland Municipal League, and its purpose is to assist local officials in understanding of local government and how it works. It promotes high ethical standards in public service and provides an informational base so local officials will be able to perform more informed policymaking. So, Mr. Sidnor, I know you're not here this evening, but I know you'll probably be watching a bit later. So, congratulations from all of the staff at the City of Laurel. Our staff continues to work on enhancing security for all city facilities, following the tragic events across the country, and most recently at the Government Office Building in Virginia Beach. We have met with staff who work at all of our facilities to hear directly from them what steps they feel that we could take to make them more comfortable and feel safer in the workplace. I'm happy to say that they provided tremendous feedback to us, and our Park and Recreation Department and Police Department will be implementing a number of changes based on employee recommendations. We'll be able to talk about those as we move forward in the months to come. Training continues for our supervisors and those interested in becoming a supervisor here in the city. We had so much interest in a recent offer for a training program that was going to be held at the City of Bowie. We had so many people from the city apply for that, that the sponsor agreed to go ahead and provide that here, in our council chambers. So for all the department heads that encouraged all of those who are interested in becoming supervisors, thank you for reaching out to your staff, and we look forward to that training program here at City Hall in the near future. City's 2020 Annual Event Calendar is in the design stage, and expected to be delivered throughout the community by mid-December. We look forward to that every, every single year. Our Park and Recs, Recreation, St. Mary's Heritage Girls participated in the McCullough Field Cleanup Event. We assisted them with paint and supplies to paint the stage and other supplies to spruce up the park, but a special thanks to the St. Mary's Heritage Girls. A pavilion structure and grill was installed at the Roland B. Schweitzer Park. Phase one of the municipal center restrooms renovations were completed. New low-energy, energy-efficient commodes and sinks have been installed, and city staff appreciate that, and our visitors, I'm sure, do as well. New LED security lights were installed in the municipal center parking lot, most importantly out front, where we had a lack of lighting, and as a part of our security assessment, we, we identified that as one of our needs. Our municipal pools were open for 100 days this summer, with only one day closed due to rain. I don't know how you did it, I don't know whether your staff's happy or sad, but only one day closed due to rain. Assisted the Laurel Arts Council with mosaic glass art installation in municipal pool. This work represents the importance of the Patuxent River and the history of Laurel's Mills, Laurel's Mill. Special thanks to the students and staff at Pilate High School, who not only designed but worked in the construction of that mosaic. The department wrapped up a full summer of events and activities with the annual Doggy Dip Day, that hosted a record 200 dogs and their owners. The department is now gearing up for a new season of classes and holiday special events. The Laurel Teen Outdoors Club expanded its offerings of trips this past summer to include hiking in the Shenandoah National Park, excitement of King's Dominion, and fun in the sun at Ocean City. The department has also expanded trip offerings to include both adult and family offerings. Laurel High School retirees, Bob Giuliani and Dwayne Jones, who are chaperoning the fun that have already included the Orioles versus Nationals at Nationals Park, and an outing to tour the new Guinness Brewery at Open Gate. Thanks to all at Park and Rec for all their, their hard work. Our information technology, our IT department is working closely with the Department of Homeland Security, to ensure that our technology infrastructure exceeds all the requirements established by federal law. At the beginning of September, the city participated in a two-day tabletop exercise to test this plan and our continuity of operations. While there are always lessons to learn from these exercises, I can't begin to tell you how tremendously impressed I was with how well Kevin and his staff has prepared this city in the event of a catastrophic event. Kevin, congratulations, it was absolutely phenomenal to understand the depth that you all have gone to really protect the infrastructure of this city. Deployed 50 new mobile data computers on the FirstNet system. FirstNet is a dedicated nationwide system that provides interoperable communications for the public safety community. It enables information sharing across disciplines and jurisdictions, and improves situational awareness. We were one of the first jurisdictions in this region, really, to go to the FirstNet system. And again, that was an effort by our IT department, and we congratulate and thank them for bringing us online with that FirstNet system. We transitioned our law enforcement software to the Prince George County Computer-Aided Dispatch and Record Management System, we've been talking about that for a number of months. The actual transition has taken place, and I know that Kevin and his staff are working very closely with each one of our officers, to really make sure that that is as seamless as possible. Now, I'm not sure what this means, other than it means, I think it means a lot. We've upgraded our storage area network, creating 30 terabytes of additional storage. If that's additional storage, I'd hate to think what we have, but having sat through the Homeland Security Continuity of Operations Plan, I'm very comfortable now knowing that we got 30 more terabytes, because that was an important part of what they were talking about, making sure that we have redundancy in our system. Economic and Community Development, had a very successful business card bingo networking event in August, and we did visit a lot of the businesses on Main Street, and understand that that was very well attended and very well received. Staff visited the town of Thurmont and their Main Street over the summer to learn more about the community, how their community is really managing their Main Street Maryland program, to see if there's some lessons learned from them that we could bring here to the city. As I just mentioned, the Economic, ECD staff and I performed a Main Street walking audit on the 17th to look at the conditions of all the properties up and down Main Street, the streetcape, streetscape, and the businesses in the area. There'll be much more to come in the future months, as we really network internally and have discussions about what we can do to really, as I say, put some lipstick on things to make it look a little nicer. So, it was a great, great event for me. I did learn that as a senior myself, walking from one end of Main Street to the other end and turn around and coming all the way back, boy, it'd be nice to have some benches somewhere I can sit down and relax, but I think experiencing it firsthand was very important. The mayor's office held the city census kickoff event on the 19th, as been, as has been mentioned. And Kristin Pulli, our director, is serving on a Prince George County Census 2020 Municipality Subcommittee, has attended two census meetings she's going to bring back again. The best of the best of the city, as we learn what do we need to do to really get out the vote, and to share with the people in the city what that really means to us, not just everybody, what, what does it really mean to those of us in the City of Laurel? It's going to have tremendous, tremendous impact. So, as the days and months come ahead, we will be sharing those with you. Our Department of Public Works, I am glad that this was a couple months, because when I first looked at this, I wasn't sure whether we were just creating a lot of trash. But this is from July through September. We collected 1,160.91 tons of refuse and 258 tons of recycling. We're doing our job. Yard debris collection was nearly 50 tons, residential special collection about 67 tons. Our compost collection, 1.78 tons. That's the first month, right, Rob? That's the first month. Nearly 2 tons of compost has been collected at the program that was put together through Public Works, the mayor has been focusing on that for some time. Tremendously excited about where that's going, and not to mention the fact that Michelle Blair, who's been working very closely on this program, was asked to make a presentation at the Washington Council of Governments, to share with all of the regions in the Washington area, Virginia, Northern Virginia, Washington DC, and Maryland, what it was that the City of Laurel was doing with this program. So, Rob, please thank Michelle, that was so very well received from all of my colleagues that I talk with at COG, they're very impressed with that. The slowdown to get around decals, more have been delivered, we've put them on 15 more bins, 68 residential toters. We did some brick repair on First Street and Main Street, installed crosswalk at Parkview, Parkview Way and Nicholas Lane, installed decorative crosswalk on Main Street at Sixth Street. And Rob and I will be having some discussions next week about all of our crosswalks in the city, with a lot of focus on, on Main Street. Evaluated two intersections and received reviewed crash reports for safety improvements, some of those improvements that Councilmember DeWalt has asked us to take a look at, and we appreciate that, for those who reach out to us and bring those things. we appreciate that for those who reach out to us and bring those things to our attention through your constituents, that is important to us. Finalized the fall 2019 tree planting list, so I'm sure there's going to be reaching out and having discussion with those on the tree committees. Completed speed data analysis on Ashford Boulevard and afforded to the police department. So chief, you've got some data now for you to work on, carry the Ashford Boulevard moving forward. Reviewed and updated and entered 518 public stuff requests. Responded to over 804 voicemails and emails to the community. So it's working. Public stuff through the app program, the Laurel app is working, it's very strong, and responding over 804 voicemails. Rob, thank your staff for all that you all are doing to keep the city looking really good. Office of Communications, we've talked about the coverage that they provided, our census kickoff, candlelight vigil. Audrey, thank you very much for the candlelight vigil. For those of us that the 9/11 tragedy 18 years ago was really a special place in all of our hearts, you did a fabulous job. Your staff did a fabulous job, and it really made a lot of people really think about 18 years ago. But that's also in addition to the numerous city YouTube productions that you all do. And I highly encourage our viewing audience to take a look at these productions. It really shares with everybody what's going on in the City of Laurel, all the businesses in the City of Laurel, the schools, the activities. Please take a moment and take a look at these great, great productions. Budget and Personnel Services, our Human Resource Officer, this is good news. They've been working with the city's insurance brokers to negotiate the cost of our new health and dental contracts for employees, dependents, and retirees. The original proposal from the insurance carrier was an increase of 8%. Mrs. Woods and her team successfully negotiated a 1.9% increase. It went from 8%, which is what they were asking, down to 1.9%, which we settled for. Congratulations to your staff, especially Mrs. Woods, for her hard work. Wouldn't have to get her, where's the police chief? Wouldn't have to get her as a part of the collective bargaining group with the police officers. Mrs. Woods also provided a seminar, a retirement seminar to interest employees this past August. Seminar was very well attended, and I'm not sure that that means a lot of people are going to retire or they're simply interested in what that means if they do retire. So we'll keep a close eye on what that is. Our annual audit is underway. During the summer, our BAPs team continued to finalize all the fiscal 2019 invoices. Our state and county revenues, as well as annual adjustments, have been recorded. Annual reports for seized currency, red light camera, and highway user revenue have been completed and submitted to the appropriate oversight jurisdictions. And I know this time of the year is just as busy as when you prepare the budget, as when you get ready for the auditors to come in. So again, to your staff, congratulations and thanks for all their hard work. The Fire Marshal finalized the opening of the Cabree Express. It's a new restaurant on Main Street. I encourage everybody to stop by. I did have an opportunity to stop in there and meet with the owners when I was on my tour of Main Street. Please stop in and give them a shot. They also finalized the opening of the Maryland Furniture Store at the Open Center where the old Sports Authority was located, and the Club Paladio Studio at Baltimore Avenue. Installed numerous three-year or 10-year smoke alarms. Deputy Chief Blankenship and our Fire Marshal have been selected to serve on a regional Maryland State Fire Marshal Task Force to look at issues pertaining to elderly and vulnerable adults and children throughout the region. So Dave, we're excited about that. Congratulations to you and your staff. There's a lot of Fire Marshals across the state, but for the City of Laurel to be selected and have two individuals on the task force is great. Best Buy's remodeling project is now completed. We've reviewed and approved plans for the expansion of the asbestos workers union local 24 at 91 Montgomery Street. And Carol's Western Wear, has been there like forever, which is the site of the new Wawa, is gone. It has been demolished, and Wawa, I'm assuming, is going to be starting their process right now. So I am going to leave the police department, report for Chief Hamel, and ask him to come up. There's a lot of things going on in the police department, certainly some good news. So instead of stealing that thunder, if I could ask the chief to come up, and if there's no questions on my report, I will sit down, Mr. President.
Mr. Goddard, let me just say that based on the way the Redskins have been playing, your report was far more entertaining.
I hope your microphone was off for the viewing audience, Mr. President, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard, Mr. President, council, Mr. Mayor. So traffic safety events in August included a sobriety checkpoint over on Route One, as well as targeted enforcement efforts to enhance safety in our communities. We're in conjunction with the Prince George's County Police and other municipal law enforcement agencies to combat dangerous driving during the month of August. We actually have two of our officers, Officer Zimmerman and Corporal, oh my God, John, now I'm drawing a blank on how to say John's last name, Solankowicz, there we go. They're receiving awards tomorrow, ADAPT Awards, for their aggressive driving efforts. So they're receiving awards at that event tomorrow. The past month has been extremely busy. We had a promotional exam for Corporal at the beginning of the month, and very well attended. Thirteen PFCs took Corporal's test. It was also the same day as the Emancipation Day Celebration, which tied up a lot of efforts for the police department. So some of the folks who took the test came out, worked after the test to help us out, and that was a successful event for the department. As was mentioned earlier, the Computer-Aided Dispatch and Records Management System transition is ongoing. Sergeant Ivory has been doing an outstanding job with that with Lieutenant Pareda. And Kevin's group, thank you very much. We are the first municipality to go over to it in Prince George's County. The rest are expected to follow in the short order. For those of you that didn't know, Denise Blackwell, Communication Specialist Supervisor, retired September 8th, after 31 years of service. We had a nice celebration for her, and we have a number of dispatchers eligible for her position. That process is ongoing. And Jahah Johnson completed her field training program, is now fully certified. We're in the midst of planning for our upcoming Citizens Police Academy, so any citizens that may be listening, please sign up for it. You can do that through the department. We did postpone our Skate with a Cop event to a later date, and we're still in the process of planning. Our next meeting is October 3rd for the Main Street Trick or Treat Event that will be October 24, '68. As you know, I just arrived, so it's been explained to me that's a huge event, so we'll be properly manning that event. Now for some really good news. So as of next Monday, we will have five new lateral police officers that are transferred into our department beginning today through next week. So that's five we'll have in a week. We have one more lateral police officer in the process. We expect him to be on by mid-October. So it's six laterals, which means no academy period, a shortened field training program for them. So we anticipate them being on the road. It's a lot more expeditious than hiring new officers, although not that we're not hiring new officers. Just had one graduate from the Howard County Police Academy. He's well ensconced in the field training program. We have one graduating from the Municipal Academy this Friday, here in Prince George's County this Friday. And we have one more that began the Prince George's County Police Training Academy. That officer or recruit officer is in their second week. So when this is all said and done, and we feel good about all these people making it all the way through to being fully functional police officers, we will move to being six under our complement in pretty short order. Great job by our recruiters, great job by our background section. And also, you know, we pulled officers from duties to do background checks. And you know, you always risk when you point out one officer, but I really want to thank Corporal Cheek, who did yeoman's work on this, took on extra work to go out and make sure we had appropriate background processes done. So that's all very, very good news. And if there's no questions, I know people want to watch the football game, but do not go out on the Beltway. Fair warning. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you again, Mr. Goddard. We'll move to Agenda Item Six, Public Hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 8:02. Let's see if we have anyone signed to speak. I'll just ask the audience, is there anyone who would like to speak during our public No one on the list? Thank you. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at 8:02. Thank you. That concludes our agenda for the evening. Council, again, if there's no other business, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1744.83]